I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, if everyone would please make sure that your cellphones are on silent or in call position, that would be greatly appreciated. We'll start the meeting with a public hearing for the issuance of a building permit on Small Road for David and Brenda Chevier, map 109 lot 5. Conversation from the board.
It appeared everything was turned in that was required on the checklist.
It's a very small lot and the septic system is across the street. Before that lot was set up, that was how this was discussed with the planning board meeting last Tuesday. Is that concerning? No, because it's a lot of record, that's... Oh, it is? It meets the requirement that was established. Obviously, there's been a fair amount of discussion, as Sonya has seen her email, on the width of the road and general road size, but that again comes back to the select board, it's a discretion of the select board for the issuance. Is that better?
Thank you. New Murphy, Chris.
Waterfront lot?
Waterfront lot. Septic is across the street.
Right, but the house itself meets the Department of Environmental Services, so that there's nothing but a water lot.
Asked to in order to be built.
Why would we need a permit?
George?
I don't see the setbacks on the plan that he has before he proposed the building. I don't see the setbacks listed on the side of the house as we normally require.
On the map, it's the little triangle lot down in the front.
You can see that the septic design shows all the setbacks and stuff.
Yes, that's what I was pointing out, is where the house location is.
It has a lot of setbacks on it.
Do you feel comfortable with the approval, Tom?
Yeah, it meets a lot of the requirements. This is actually one of the lots that, remember Bruce for Hopeax lot, that came in front of the zoning board a few years ago, but that was before the zoning was changed for that two years, that you gotta do something, so he's entitled to, that it goes with the land, it doesn't have that expiration date. He's one of the last ones that are not that did have that.
Very good, thank you.
What is the... Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question?
You may.
John, what are the setbacks? I can't read them, if it's supposed to be on this one.
It's forty from the street, but it doesn't show.
Because I know, you got it on your thing.
Yeah, I'm pulling it up to the...
The peeing lot is every day. I meant to bring the large pocket and I forgot it, I was pulling it. But that may be zoning board approval from the plane that I had.
So this is the one that came from the CBA, correct?
Yeah, that was when Bruce for Hopeax came in. I don't know.
Alright, so then there was a... Thank you.
So I'm looking for a motion, if everyone is all set.
Motion to approve the building permit.
I will second, or George will second.
I was gonna say for, yeah, map lot 109, sorry, map 109 lot 5 on Small Road.
Aye aye.
Aye aye.
Article 5.
Map 5. Very good. The next item on here is the... Are we doing applications first or?
Yep.
The new library trustee alternate, Matt, and I am gonna butcher his last name, so.
Kachaluba.
Thank you.
That is perfect.
Fantastic. The library trustees voted to recommend the appointment of Matt as a library trustee alternate, the select board as appointing authority. They're asking that the board consider him for a one-year term. Is there anything? I will pause to close the public hearing. Are there any comments on the public hearing for the issuance of a building permit on Small Road? Ron? Thank you.
Hi, Ron Sejean, next door neighbor to that lot. We look forward to having Mr. Chevaliers as neighbors, they're great people. One concern as a resident, those of us who have built houses on Small Road, most of us have had to build within the footprint of the previously existing buildings. That doesn't seem to be a requirement in this case, and I'm wondering why that is.
Was there a previous building?
Yeah, it burned down one year ago.
It was previously done before the ZBA, seven years ago, and they approved it to us before the ZBA. John was saying...
Yeah?
There was no building there when he went to the ZBA, and they made a proposal in the ZBA.
Okay, but they had been prior to that.
A long time prior.
Well, since 1989, I think was the fire, something like that. Okay, and the other concern from the point of view of the areas link association, that lot is the lowest lot in the area, and in the spring, and anytime we ever had a rain, the neighborhood drains through that lot. You can't walk across it in the spring because it's like quicksand. I'm just concerned that when they bring in the fill that they're gonna need to bring in to build there, that's gonna create a big dam, and I don't know where the water's gonna go. Is it gonna sit on the road, or is it gonna find some way of getting to the lake? I'm concerned about the runoff that's gonna go into the lake without having permeable soil to filter through, and all those kinds of concerns.
Dan? I'm sure the state, because it's within the 250 feet, the state looks at all of that, and there's a pretty intensive permit, impossible to reach field, being so close to waterway. State, we cross the street, but still within 250 feet. Anything within 250 feet, the state thinks I might just go to it.
But you don't have the answer as to what the water management is going to be?
They approved it.
Well, I'm not talking about the septic, I'm talking about the runoff that comes down the road and goes across that lot. It's the only path to the lake. It's gonna go somewhere, and that lot is where it goes.
Tracy?
So, as previously stated, it appears that there was a home on the property and potentially impermeable surfaces before this, correct?
No, the home that was there before sat on tree stops. It wasn't really up to code, if there was a code. I don't think there was a code.
And now we're adhering to the code for both the septic wetlands and setbacks?
Yeah, they used to have an outhouse there.
Yeah, so I guess my thoughts are, going forward with this build and approving this permit potentially means that it's being looked at much closer in this particular build instance than it was prior to the house that was there during the fire. I'm not sure if our road agent wants to comment.
Hold on one second. I'm also going to ask you folks to amend your motion and second for our vote because the piece that we didn't include in it is that we recommend they join the road association and also that they, that any repairs that need to be made to the road are made before the issuance of the building permit. Or, oh, sorry, occupancy permit. No, go ahead, Dan.
And this is a private road?
Yep.
So technically, we're not supposed to spend a penny on it, so we can't really get recommendations from the road agent, because he can't spend any money on it.
No, but his recommendation is about the condition of the road and how he believes it should be addressed once they complete their construction project.
Well, I don't oppose the permit, but I just wanted to have those concerns made public, because we've had a lot of construction on Small Road in the last couple of years, it's like boomtown down there, and I'm really concerned about the impact to the water quality if we get a water runoff. Okay, thank you.
Mark, would you like to?
In my notes on my survey of that piece, I made notes about we've gotta be really careful not to introduce anything that would create a burn that would stop the water from going on that lot where it does now and keep the water going down the road to the lots down past it. So, you know, just we gotta make, just make sure that we stay lower and try not to, even if it does end up on that lot, try not to constrict it so that you're funneling a whole lot of that water either side of the house. Try and keep it as broad as possible and cover as much area as possible before it reaches the lake. But, you know, the big thing is not to create any kind of a burn along the front of that property, because that would send all the water down to the end of the road.
Tracy?
Did I bring a motion?
You did.
I would amend the motion that the applicant must join the road association and that there be a note that during the construction process and following, there not be a burn created to restrict any water flow through the area of the lot.
I'll amend my motion to second the motion. Does that make sense?
You'll second, you'll amend the motion?
I'm seconding the motion, the original motion.
Alright, if you don't mind revoting, please.
Aye aye.
Aye aye.
Article 5.
Map 5. Close public comment and the public hearing. Now, moving back to Matt, sorry about that. So, the board is asked to consider Matt's appointment to the library, to, as a library trustee alternate for a one-year term. Is there anything that we need in public for, any discussion thereof? Seeing nothing, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second it.
Alright, we'll call vote.
Aye aye.
Aye aye.
Article 5.
Map 5.
And Mr. Kachaluba, if you'd like, the chair can read you your oath of office tonight, save you a trip to the town hall, or you can do the town hall later. Do you have a preference?
Let's do it tonight, sure.
Fantastic. So you step up to the podium with the chair.
If you would repeat after me.
Sure.
I, Matt Kachaluba, do solemnly and sincerely swear and affirm.
I, Matt Kachaluba, do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge all duties.
And perform all duties.
And perform all duties.
Incumbent upon me as an alternate member of the library trustees.
Incumbent upon me as an alternate member of the library trustees.
Of Barrington, New Hampshire for one year.
Of Barrington, New Hampshire for one year.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
Agreeable to the rules and regulations of the Constitution.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
And the laws of the state of New Hampshire.
So help me God.
So help me God.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
This I do under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Alrighty. Thank you for your long hearing.
We're playing glad health.
Support and election official.
And for community members at home, I believe we're looking for one more library alternate?
Yes.
So anybody that's interested?
Two more.
Two more, excuse me, two more library trustee alternates for interested members of the community.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think I have to have Matt sign it on this, am I right?
Uh, yep.
Yes, where am I missing? So it's in there now? Appointee signature? This is election official.
Well, because they might be an election official also. So if you wanna sign up here and tell their guys their concerns.
No problem, I can run it back.
Alright, thanks.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks for having me.
Not been a good day?
Oh, sure.
Well, you can just step down if that's what's up.
Yes. So I am going to hand this off to Ms. Harakon, who will cover the TurboCam development agreement and land sale.
Thank you, Chairperson Matt, who is stepping down and accusing himself from the next appointment. We are looking at a TurboCam development agreement and land sale. TurboCam approached the town to purchase three lots on Redemption Way in order to expand the business in Barrington. Town is currently under a development agreement with TurboCam for the property on Redemption Road. This existing development facilitated the construction of TurboCam's facility on Redemption Road with an assessed value of $9,863,200. TurboCam would now like to purchase the three additional lots in order to construct an approximately 30,000 square foot training and research facility. We have a development plan that is 18 pages long, I think we've reviewed it at two prior meetings, is that correct?
Correct.
The development agreement transfers the lots to TurboCam for the amount of $88,050 with a development requirement. The updated development agreement would replace any existing agreements with TurboCam. The project would be required to follow all existing plans and building requirements and processes. The board is asked to consider selling the three town hall lots to TurboCam for $88,050 pursuant to the 18-page attached development agreement. Select person, air.
I would like to call the board. DE or industrial service, I've been contracted with TurboCam on another property through maintenance work. I have no financial gain from this project or any endorsement of it, so I feel I don't have a conflict, but I'd like to call the board. I am engaging in maintenance on old repairs at the buildings, other building.
Select person.
The statement that Select Person Air has made is in compliance with the RSA, so I have no objection to it.
Just calling the board, Select Person Hatch, do you feel that Select Person Air should recuse himself in this instance, or?
No.
Very good.
He's not gaining any money from this.
Excellent. I would have that same response. Thank you for calling the board, Select Person Air. Any other comments, questions, concerns?
I'd like to move the motion and approve this, make a motion to approve this agreement with TurboCam.
Very good. Do we have a second on the motion? Okay.
Aye aye.
Aye aye.
And Harakon 5.
If I may, Madam Chair, I must say that way back when TurboCam started facilities here in Barrington, I had the opportunity to be on the board way back then when the original building came, and I say it's been a helpful hand to Barrington, and I look forward to more of the help that they're gonna help provide us here for our town.
I would ask, if you could, please, Town Administrator, would you please just provide a quick public comment on whether or not TurboCam provides tax dollars on their buildings to the town of Barrington? This seems to be a question that occurs often in the public sector.
Yeah, it's a great question. So TurboCam has entered a development agreement previously with the select board and the town for development of property, but no aspect of that agreement or this agreement reduces any tax impact that their properties would have. The purpose of a development agreement with property that the town owns is to arrive as the highest and best taxable use of that property. The town has seen success with this development agreement with that $9 million property on Redemption Road, which is fully taxed, and this action by the board allows TurboCam to expand in that area on land previously owned by the town that TurboCam is buying that will put that previously untaxed land onto the tax rolls, and the purpose of the development agreement makes sure that they actually develop it, that they actually build on this lot and make it so we can tax it at its highest and best use. And so TurboCam absolutely pays taxes, they're the largest single taxpayer in the town of Barrington.
Thank you.
Good question. I like that, thank you.
Moving on, would you like to return to your chair, Chairperson Matt?
And Debbie Chief Joy, if you could hit the light on the right. Thank you.
Yep, and I will turn this over to Karen to go through the executive section of the budget.
Great, so obviously, we've been preparing for a number of months. Special thanks to department heads and staff at the town hall for the start of the budget process, which is tonight. A couple of housekeeping items, so all members of the board and the advisory budget committee have copies of the budget binder. The electronic copy of all the materials provided in those binders is available online for the public. They'll be continuously updated, we have a few additions tonight that hopefully members have grabbed, and the intent, as included in my report tonight, is to specifically link each item of the budget that's to be discussed that evening, so members of the public can follow those links and see the specific documents opposed to thumbing through the electronic binder that's a couple hundred pages long. So, the intent of this process is to be as open and transparent as possible, make as much information available to the community as possible, and if anybody has questions, not just the advisory budget committee and the select board, don't hesitate to contact the town hall, contact me directly and we'll make sure that everybody is as informed as possible going into town meeting in March. I'd also like to give the advisory budget committee a chance to introduce themselves, or I will, since they don't have, all have microphones. So down at the end, we have our treasurer, who's a member of the budget committee, Peter Royce, long-serving volunteer in the town of Barrington. Steve Saunders is the budget committee chair, also long-serving volunteer in the town of Barrington, and Dan Manshrek is a new member of the budget committee this year, and a relatively new member of Barrington, but eager to get involved. Within the first year he was in town, he was at the town hall to see me and ask about volunteer opportunities, and he made the decision that he'd like to be a part of the budget committee. He has previous budget committee experience in one of his former towns of residence. And a member of the budget committee not present is John Morris, also a new member of the budget committee, brings a lot of data analytic experience to the group. And George Bailey is a member of the budget committee as well, in addition to being a select board member. So, I have a brief presentation to talk, big picture, about the budget and then the budgets that I'm presenting. So, from working from the top down, the local government services that the town provides through our exceptional staff and department heads is paid for in large part from property taxes. It's also subsidized significantly through vehicle registration, other fees for service, certain state and federal aid, and other small miscellaneous sources of revenue, which take our over $7 million budget and only require about $4 million to be raised for property taxes. So, the tax rate, so obviously the residents in Barrington pay property taxes that fund the school, the town, and the county, so this is just looking at the municipal tax rate, and it shows that the tax rate has been very stable for a number of years. You'll notice a significant drop in the rate in 2017. That's a result of a statistical update, which increased property values about 8.4%. So the drop in the rate didn't necessarily adjust the tax impact to residents, just changed the rate to reflect a new assessment. So, the measures of financial stability in a community, certainly a stable tax rate is a very important aspect of that, and there's been very limited budgetary impact for the last eight years. Budget has increased over that period of time, but the increases have been covered by an expanding tax base and also increased revenue. So decisions like the board made earlier tonight, supporting, you know, responsible commercial development in town on commercial land, like the development agreement with TurboCam, allows the tax base to be expanded in order to cover additional services from the town. So, the expansion of the tax base in ways like that, and, you know, certainly limiting the increases in the budget, has led to that stable municipal tax rate. Another measure of financial stability, something we talked about recently at the select board, is the unassigned fund balance. So this is essentially a savings account to promote cash flow and emergency expenditures, and Barrington currently holds about $4 million in unassigned fund balance, which is about 13%, right close to the middle of the recommended range. So, by the measures of financial stability, Barrington is doing very well, and we intend to keep it that way. So this is that unassigned fund balance, so you'll see the history of that balance, dropped a fair amount in 2019 as a result of committing a large portion of that fund balance towards projects at town meeting, most notably the new town hall. So just as it's responsible to keep a comfortable fund balance, it's just as responsible to make sure that we're not holding on to too much of the taxpayers' dollars in that unassigned fund balance, and so the voters deciding in March to use a million dollars of that towards the town hall helped get the unassigned fund balance closer to the responsible value that it's at now, 13%. That third column, the used by town meeting, we'll talk about that towards the end of the presentation, the short presentation I might add, but that's a way that the town has been able to fund a significant amount of capital improvements and capital projects without a specific impact to the tax rate. Now certainly, most of that money was already collected through taxes, but it's a way to have responsible financial spending, using that money for good. So again, big picture, what you have in front of you, the materials provided for the proposed budget, in 2019, the town was approved to spend $7,124,095 as an operating budget. The proposal tonight and for 2020, as we start this process, is $7,357,782. So that's a difference of $233,687, or 3.28%. And again, this is, these numbers will change throughout the process as the select board make decisions and make changes. There will also be adjustments recommended by department heads as needs change throughout the process. But as we start tonight, from the materials that the department heads asked for, I reviewed and put together, the current impact of the operating budget is 3.28%. It's important to note that that isn't necessarily what the impact on the tax rate will be. Again, the impact on the tax rate is based in large part due to any increase in assessed value and any changes in revenue, and that information will become more clear once 2019's tax rate is set. So, the budget for wage increases and benefits, so at previous select board meetings, the select board voted to authorize a 3% wage increase, which is comprised of a 1.25% cost of living adjustment, 1.75% step for eligible employees, and a 1.75% top of scale bonus for those employees that have reached the top of their scale in the compensation program. Those, all of those budgeted wages are included in the budget. The benefits, there's certain assumptions that have to be made, there's a lot of details about the assumptions made in the benefit portion of what's budgeted in the binders and available. in the binders and available online. Right now, because we won't know the rates for the benefits we offer employees until about March of next year, the assumption, the planning, the budget for budgetary purposes, is planning on a 10% increase in those rates. Recently, we haven't seen a 10% increase in those rates, and this is a responsible way to budget. As the process continues, we'll end up with clearer information of what those rates will be. And certainly, if the guaranteed increase is less than 10%, we'll adjust the budget numbers accordingly. But 10% is the starting point. This budget presented to you includes money set aside to fund the results of the compensation study that's set aside in the incident fund. Again, that's a number that will change throughout the process. Once we have a clearer picture, we suspect that process will be complete by December. Once we have a clear understanding of what impact that might be, we can adjust that number to more properly budget. Additionally, there's money in the operating budget, which will fund portions of the move to the New Town Hall. So in March of 2019, voters approved $1.9 million to design and construct a new Town Hall of 10,000 square feet or less. The process of vacating the current rented space that we're in and moving to the new space will incur additional expenses to the town, which are proposed in the operating budget. Our rented space will have to make certain repairs and work to return that space back to the rented condition. The moving expenses are self-explanatory. And most of the furniture and equipment used at the current Town Hall is part of the rental agreement. The town does not own that. So there will be certain equipment needs that are currently budgeted in the information provided. And again, once we get farther with the process, with the Town Hall, those numbers will be more clear and will certainly be adjusted appropriately. So before moving into the specific budgets that I'm going to present tonight, for the overall budget, the materials provided, are there any questions from the Select Board members or the Advisory Budget Committee? Great, so the budgets that I'm presenting tonight are the executive budget, general government buildings, general assistance, and the other miscellaneous budgets in the proposal you have. In the Section 11 of the budget binder, that cover page summarizes each one of those budgets, any changes, and the percent change that you can reference. So in the executive budget, the Municipal Office Administrator position is a position that was moved from Financial Administration to Executive. So you'll see an increase there, but a corresponding decrease in the Financial Administration budget. There's an increase in the Executive Earn Time buyout, previous Town Administrator, and there's only one employee in Executive. Previous Town Administrator did not accrue Earn Time, and now there's two positions in this budget, which Earn Time needs to be budgeted for. And then the Incident Fund, which I discussed, includes money for the compensation study, potential funding of the road study, Wi-Fi upgrades, and some other miscellaneous items, which the Select Board will, you know, discuss throughout the process and may choose to fund with 2019 appropriations. On General Government Buildings, the building maintenance line is reduced by $25,000. That reduction is proposed in order to offset the increase in equipment, to make that a neutral impact to the budget. That equipment increase of $25,000 is to properly budget for replacement of, or purchase of furniture and equipment for the New Town Hall facility. The rental lease line is proposed to increase $35,700. Again, that money is budgeted in order to repair and meet lease requirements of the leased property the town has been in since 2011. The vehicle fuel line is proposed to increase $12,500. That brings it up to $87,500, and that's based on price and usage. Back in 2015, the budgeted amount was $110,000. It's been reduced a couple of times throughout those years, and it seems, based on price and usage, that it would have been reduced too much. We talked about the equipment line. Questions about those budgets?
I have a comment on it. Working at the full-time hourly and part-time hourly for Executive, am I correct, I'm assuming this is your salary, so maybe this is my different office?
So you'll see that there's multiple budget salary categories in Executive. So if you look at 4130, 02, 4110, that's salary, and that would be my salary as Town Administrator.
Right.
02, 4111, the full-time hourly.
Yeah. That's what caught my attention. And full-time TA, part-time hourly.
Yep, so that's a great note, good catch. I apologize, that's a mistake. So the money that's in 4111 for TA full-time hourly should be in part-time hourly. So that's where the position, the municipal office administrator moved from Financial Administration, was moved to part-time, and the line was renamed to remove the TA portion.
Okay, so the TA part-time, full-time hourly is going to be to the TA part-time hourly, and the TA part is going to go away?
Correct. Yep. Yeah, thank you for noting that. I apologize for not catching that. It won't adjust the bottom-line numbers, but I'll make sure that the material provided as an update will reflect that change. Other, Tracy?
I have a quick question in reference to the Earn Time buyout. Why are we leaving only $4,000 in there, because we're anticipating there will be Earn Time in the next year?
So for next year, so Earn Time, only 50% of what Earn Time is accrued within a year can be bought out. And so there was $500, I don't even know why there was $500 in there previously, the previous Town Administrator did not accrue Earn Time, but the two employees that are in, paid for from that budget in 2020 do accrue Earn Time, and money will need to be allotted for Earn Time.
Is it anticipated?
So each department, it's a line that's difficult to budget exactly. There's no history for either of the employees in this line. That's a calculation based on 75% of the maximum that would be able to be bought out.
Is that likely? Like, if you look at the trend of how people use their time, and I know I value my paid time off, so it's 4,500 at a point, because I feel like that's probably a little high.
So again, it was, the challenge is, without knowing exactly what will be used, approaching a proper budget for that month. So other departments that have two employees were referenced, that have similar amounts, again, it's based on the hourly wage, the hourly rate, wage rate. And so the maximum impact, 75% of the maximum, maximum impact of what is budgeted?
Which the maximum impact is 50% of Earn Time, correct?
50% of Earn Time accrued, I think you're correct.
And we're taking 75% of 50% as the target?
That's what was budgeted.
Executive consultants, I'm assuming that 5,000, it's theirs, in case we were looking to retain Mr. Script and Service for something?
Yeah, so in the description, it describes that right now, the town has a per diem arrangement with both the retired Town Administrator and the retired Administrative Assistant. I felt like it was responsible, as we complete the full year, and certainly the move to the Town Hall, that we have money available should either of those services be necessary. The current per diem agreement with the retired Administrative Assistant expires in December, so certainly require Board action to continue any of those services. But I think it would be responsible to have money available to pursue those avenues. But the budget line, as consultants would, you know, certainly, that's the intent, but it would be available should other consulting services be necessary.
The incident, Executive Incident Fund, we're upping like $15,000, based on what we have currently used in it. 4820, there will be here as I pull it up, just as I was going to leave this.
So I, in my estimate, I estimate that we'll use that line completely. We still have to purchase the new phones, we're switching over to the phone system, and there's a few outstanding items, which the Select Board has approved as a funding source from that budget line, which will use the full $85,000.
Yep, I feel like we went heavy on that, though, this past year, because we were anticipating of having some big-ticket items that might get that.
Right, and so for 2020, certainly, it's a placeholder for certain things that will become more clear, like I said, the compensation study, the road study, some other IT improvements. So I would imagine that the Select Board, as they have done in previous years, would not set this line in stone until the end of the budget process, once some of that's more clear. Steve?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify that the Budget Committee...
Steve, put the mic down, please.
The Budget Committee is going to hold our opinion on the Incident Fund line item until the end of the process, so we can review that in conjunction with all of the budgets to see how tightly believed they are and whether or not we think it's overstated, as you just mentioned, you may be right now. So we're going to withhold on that.
Okay. Cam?
I'd like to go back to that later on, too, at the end of the budget.
Tracy?
Have we, at any point during this year, had to utilize the consultant base?
That's a new line. So the two employees that were, have per diem arrangements with, the retired Town Administrator has been used once for two hours, and the retired Administrative Assistant has been used on a few occasions, totaling not more than 10 or 12 hours.
Very good, thank you.
George?
I have a question on the executive advertising. I noticed that we've kicked that, I won't stumble that, so is there a reason for that?
There is. So that line will be overspent by quite a bit in 2019 as a result of certain efforts that the Select Board made to disseminate information, certainly advertising the vote in 2019, and some other, the mailer and signs. And I think, I think it would be good practice for the Board to invest in certain other information-sharing avenues that are available to them, whether it's with signs, or in the news, or with mailers, as, in an effort to, you know, maintain an informed resident pool and share information. So my intent in budgeting that line, close to what was spent, what will be spent by the end of 2019, is to continue that practice of the Board in making an investment in information sharing, making every effort to be as open and transparent as possible.
And Garret?
It's my understanding that our Town Common that was being produced by the rect department is no longer being produced, and so I think it becomes important to have those funds available and for it to convey information and remain transparent.
I'm not asking, I'm just asking for a reason, I have such an understanding. But I just said that my reason for asking, so I have better understanding of why the money is, and I was not aware, and I appreciate you telling me, but the rect is not going to be doing it for us. Thank you.
Any other comments? Anything from the ABC would like to comment on?
We're very fortunate that our intended our meeting, we deliberated this budget, and he'd answered all our questions satisfactorily at that meeting. I would ask that Connor Bull, kind of the timeline and for the budgets in the departments as they're presenting, and let people know that it will be a different department each budget.
Absolutely. Yep, be happy to. So one of the pieces of information which is available online and in the beginning of the budget binder in Section 2, is the calendar for the budget process. And so the, each department, in a couple of evenings, we have multiple departments presenting on those Monday evenings, and it's listed on this calendar which department is presenting. Those departments will, you know, come before you and present on the information that's provided in your binder. And some of them will have a PowerPoint presentation, some of them will have a discussion. The Advisory Budget Committee meets prior to those meetings, those meetings are indicated on this calendar as well, and develops questions for those departments and department heads in advance, which are sometimes answered ahead of time and sometimes presented during the presentation. And so that process will continue. There are a couple of holidays, which we will skip presentations, but with those exceptions, the budget process continues to meet every week through December 16. So October 14th is a holiday, which we will not be meeting, and November 11th is a holiday, which we won't be meeting. There's meetings every Monday, other than those two, from here until December 16, presenting department budgets and finalizing for Town Meet in March.
Chair?
Go ahead, George.
I have a question, is how often will you anticipate updates to the budget here? So tonight, we've talked about some items, we'll hear if maybe there's changes, but in the event that we do make changes down the line, some expenses, when do we anticipate, Steve, in that update?
Yeah, that's a great question. So as I did tonight, as additional information or changed information becomes available, I'll certainly send it out electronically and make copies available after the meeting. As far as changing the numbers, if, for instance, if a budget line were changed, I'll make sure that the summary budget is updated for every meeting, to reflect the current proposed impact. So if one of these budget lines were reduced by 100,000, I'd make sure that the summary budget information you have in Section 1 shows what that reduction does to the impact, changing that 3.28%, et cetera. And after the close of each month, so the close of September will be the next one, I'll ask department heads to update their year-end estimate, and I'll make sure those changes are available. So the Board and the ABC will have updated year-end estimates and also updated expenditures as requested by the ABC.
If that happens, I'm going to say very gratefully, thank you. A lot easier for us, a bunch of press, thank you.
Connor did not, also recognize he's going to provide us at the end, after September closes, the year-to-date for 2019 for every department, line item by line, and so that we'll then have a good view of where we are this year toward the end of the year to help us begin with our analysis going forward.
I'm just saying, thank you, we're fascinated.
So if there's nothing further on my budget, there's a few other items I'd like to cover regarding the budget, just a couple more slides. So we talked about tax rate setting. So this year, Barrington, as many of you know, is going through the mandatory five-year revaluation. That will change values, assessed values in Barrington. The assessor will be presenting that information, a summary of that information to the Board on October 7. At that time, we'll understand what our assessed value is. Shortly after that, our tax rate will be set, so we'll understand what impact the previous Town Meeting has had on the tax rate, and we'll be able to better understand what impact decisions we're looking at for 2020 will have on the tax rate. So again, October 7, the assessor will present that information for residents. You'll see that assessed value, that changed assessed value on your December tax bill. So that information will be available to you at that time. In 2018, the equalized ratio was 91%, meaning properties sold for, or properties were assessed at 91% of what they sold for. Essentially, they were under-assessed. It's not inherently a problem, because everybody's dealing with the same reduction in assessment, or the town's still collecting enough money. But if the values increase by 9%, the tax rate should drop about 9%. rate should drop about 9% as well, but that information will be presented on October There are, we anticipate one bond article this year for the new library, that will be a replacement of the 700 square foot current facility with a 13,120-foot facility of a library and community center, proposed to be located on Ramsdale Lane. Currently, the Barrington Library Foundation, which is a nonprofit supporting this effort and fundraising for the project, has collected $242,197, which is committed to buy down the cost of the project for taxpayers. And there's also a commitment from donors of an additional $248,780, which is anticipated to be collected by 2021. So that money and any money that is donated will impact the total project cost and reduce what is required of taxpayers for a bond amount or be raised by taxes. The estimated project cost right now is 4.7 million, so that's based on a 7% increase in construction costs, material and construction costs. That number will be more clear as the process continues, there are architects who will develop more exact cost estimates, they'll, hopefully they'll continue to collect money, that number will likely change as well, but that's a bond article which is anticipated for the 2020 warrant.
Yeah, that's just a question, is that 4.7 less the amount collected and committed?
It's a good question, that's the total project cost. So the total project cost right now is estimated at 4.7 million, and so if the, if we were authoring the warrant article tonight, the 242,000 of collected is what I would recommend to reduce that and list the bond request at approximately 4.5 million. It would be the option of the Select Board to also consider reducing the bond request by the amount that is committed but not yet collected, so that, you know, would be a reduction of approximately 500,000, which would have the bond request of 4.2 million. So the concern of reducing the bond approval by money that isn't already collected is if that money goes uncollected, the town would have to raise the additional amount by taxation because they wouldn't have enough of a bond to draw down. The alternative is the library would have to reduce the amount they're spending on the project by any amount that is uncollected.
Dan?
To clarify something, the library committee got back to us on email, I might ask a question about the plans, if they're ready to go up the bid, they are not. So the numbers are not really actually real numbers.
More accurate numbers will be available throughout the process, absolutely.
Tracy was next.
It's my understanding there's also 380, something thousand dollar contingency built into that?
The project has a 10%, the construction project has a 10% contingency.
Thank you.
George?
Yeah, so what you're telling us is that if we don't figure that 248,780 correctly, that that would be obligated to make up the difference to taxation?
So it's the difference between collected money and committed money?
I understand that, but I'm saying, the committed money, if it was not collected and the bond was approved, and the money is not collected, then we're on the hook. Is that true?
That is true, so the warrant article will be authored in a way to raise and appropriate the total project cost, so in this case it would be 4.7 billion. And the request for a bond is somewhat separate because in the warrant article it'll explain that we anticipate X number of hundreds of thousands of dollars from private funding, and then it will request a bond amount of the difference. And so the bond amount is all you can borrow, you can't borrow any more than the bond amount. So if the money that's reduced up top is reduced based on what's committed, and that isn't collected, if that isn't collected, then the town would be able to raise that money by taxation, but would not be able to borrow that money.
Tracy?
I just know more than some numbers.
And anybody that's interested, my wife made cupcakes on account of being born 29 years ago tonight, so you're welcome. I sure was.
Is spanking appropriate, Mr. Chairman?
What's that?
Is spanking appropriate?
Absolutely not, I'm happy for her sake.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry that you had to be here for that.
I'm glad to be here, thank you. So any other questions about the library? So the only other non-traditional warrant article that I currently anticipate on the warrant is the warrant article for the replacement of Green Hill Bridge, so as the Board is aware, and hopefully the community is as well, this is a state bridge aid project approved for fiscal year 2022 with 80% of state funds. It's going to replace the single lane bridge with a two lanes at 12 feet wide. The current project cost is estimated at just under $2 million, that's with 2019, and the town's portion will be approximately $400,000. So this will be a warrant article requesting to raise and appropriate the full amount, indicating the 2 million, or the 1.6 million dollars to come from the state and 400,000 to be raised from fund balance for the town's portion. So using fund balance as a funding source will, you know, reduce future tax impact as we discussed before. And then the re-occurring warrant articles as part of the warrant will be paving and related road work, 100,000 highway equipment capital reserve contribution at 75, Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve at 75, emergency communications at 50, fire truck capital reserve contribution at 50, fire rescue equipment capital reserve at 10,000, 5,000 for the Tricentennial Celebration Expendable Trust, 3,000 for the Library Technology Capital Reserve, and 2,000 for the Cemetery Capital Reserve.
Is there an increase in any of those?
No need.
I thought the Tricentennial was the last.
So those are certainly, it's at the Board's liberty to change any of those, this is what's anticipated at this time. And using fund balance as a funding source for those capital projects, as we discussed before, is responsible investment in the capital projects while reducing a future tax impact. It's using primarily unexpended appropriations, which are taxes raised, and additionally, some of it is revenue in excess of projections. But the fund balance, as we discussed, is a savings account that ensures cash flow and can be used in case of emergency. So use of fund balance in this way in 2020 will bring our fund balance at 12, approximately 12.1%, which is still solidly in the middle of the recommended range. So that's all I had to present.
All right. First, two public comments. Anyone, like once? Here? I'm curious as to whether the amount of money we currently have in the bridge capital reserve is going to be depleted on Malago, or is the 400,000 something negotiable?
It's a good question, so two separate items, so in 2018, a town meeting in 2018, the voters were asked to raise and appropriate for the Malago Bridge replacement, and so that money is an account separate from the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve. So a portion of the project was paid for out of the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve prior to that appropriation. Similarly with Green Hill, the work that we've done, the town has paid for to date for the Green Hill Bridge project, has been paid for out of the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve account. If the town is successful in passing the warrant article for the Green Hill Bridge project, that money will be set aside in a separate account and spent from, not further depleting the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve. The intent of the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve is twofold, one certainly to fund the town's portion of Bridge Aid projects, but also the town has a number of larger culverts and potential bridge projects which won't be eligible for state Bridge Aid and will need to fund ourselves, one being the Causeway at, on Young Road by Swain Lake, another being the series of culverts on Pond Hill Road where Little Long Pond drains into Ayers Lake, yeah, Little Long Pond drains into Ayers Lake. So those are projects which we anticipate using, being required to use the, only the Bridge and Culvert Capital Reserve account.
Dan?
Yes, I asked last year if we're to increase that, all the projects coming up, do we, I don't believe we increased it.
I can check my records, I believe it was increased $25,000 from 50 to 75. Anybody here remember?
That's a recall too. Because we had all the projects coming up, and we said, make sure we're covered.
I can give back to the Board that information, but I do believe it was increased 25,000.
Anything else from public comment? All right, closing public comment. Yes, A B C, you're more than welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but we'd have to, the warrant, your time, if you wouldn't mind, so thank you again for participating in the meeting this evening.
Thank you, Amy.
Review of minutes from 9/9.
My other commentary is that I'll be interested to hear back, I thought the library did a very nice job with their presentation. The Board is waiting to hear about the total amount of earmarked funds that have been donated, I think that's the last piece of information that we may be waiting on, and I appreciated that the library group did a lot of exploration on grants in the past week or so.
Looks like there was one that was viable?
I think more than one, but I think they need to do a little more digging, so, but anyway, if there's no other questions, comments, or concerns, I would make the motion to accept the meeting minutes from the September time.
I will second the motion. We'll call go. Here I.
Very pleasant.
Hardik off by?
Now by. All right.
Very complete, thank you.
Yes.
Again, for the community, anybody reviewing the minutes, the materials discussed at the meeting are all linked in the minutes as well, not just my report, so again, we're making every effort to be as open and transparent as possible, make that information available and as easily accessible as we can.
And moving into old business, the next item on the agenda is the in-house paramedic transportation rate setting. Tracy?
I appreciated the breakdown of information, it was very comprehensive and certainly gave me a much better picture of what was happening with market rates.
All righty. Is there any other further discussion on the paramedic compensation rate that I believe we are looking for a motion?
I'd comfortably make a motion to accept the 8645 in response to transport utilizing our own paramedics and with a minimum of 2.5 hours for both the transplant and travel to and from the actual intercept.
Amy, is there a second to that motion? I will, Dan, so a second motion. Chief, I'll second that. Chief Walker, is there anything good like that? All right, that by.
Hardik off by.
Here I.
There we go. The low bed trailer replacement, on the bike, you're up to, need to dialogue, yes.
So the last meeting, the Board directed the road agent to investigate equipment, which included the assisted ramp, either air or hydraulic assisted ramps, so you have that additional information for you, and the road agent has our recommendation.
Okay, so you have in front of you many different models to choose from. Me personally, I'm going back to my original choice of the Talbert 20-ton with the standard spring assist ramps. While I appreciate some of the selectmen's concern about my back and the back of my crew, if we were using this trailer every single day, multiple times a day, I'd say yeah, it's a no-brainer, we need the air assist ramps, such is not the case. I think, you know, for the additional $4,759 for the seven-foot air assisted ramps on that same trailer, that money could be, could be better spent elsewhere, preferably in my department. But usually, there's enough people around, if somebody is going to have a struggle with those ramps, there's somebody there to help them. And even the standard spring assist ramps, until we get three or four years old and those springs start to fatigue, those ramps throw pretty, pretty easy, so I feel comfortable with, with my initial choice.
Dan, then George?
I'm pretty sure I saw the trailer and the truck by his guy actually over a corner, I feel very comfortable with that trailer.
George?
Since I missed the last meeting, but I have a question, do you have belts for the employees to wear when they have to do that?
No, not currently.
It's actually been proven that they don't actually provide medical-
That's, where would I find that information?
I would gladly share that.
You can send it to me, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So based on our second round of reviewing this material, I would feel comfortable making the motion to pursue the purchase of the 20-ton trailer with standard spring assist ramps.
I'll second that.
Just a question I have is, with what budget item, what line item are we intending to extract $19,000 out of for the purchase of the trailer?
Yep, and so I was going to mention to Vice Chair Hardikoff that the proposed motion would be to spend the money out of the Highway Equipment Capital Reserve account, which has approximately $200,000 in it, and so that would require a specific motion the Select Board's agents to expect.
So since we didn't have a second, I don't need to amend my motion, I can just-
I second it.
Okay, so I'd like to amend my motion that the funds be spent, $18,856 from the actual capital reserve for highway equipment fund.
I'll amend my second and resecond it, the new.
Sorry to make more work for you.
And by understanding that that is a trailer that's available in stock, and so hopefully we'll be able to get that purchased and into service in short order and be able to continue working from.
We'll call go.
Here I.
Hardik off by?
Now by. All right, Holy Rosary Credit Union, the Christmas Dove, road name, Hardik off.
So quick update for the Board, Holy Rosary and Christmas Dove will submit three names to me by tomorrow morning for the newly constructed road. That will be at the Board's decision on September 30th to choose from those three names and name the newly constructed road. Recently, within the past week, the old Christmas lane entrance was closed to traffic as a result of requirements with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, so in the meantime, that Christmas lane sign was moved to the new road to ensure continued service from emergency personnel, and that temporary solution does meet the satisfaction of the fire chief from an emergency services perspective. So we'll continue that way until the Board formally names the road, and after submitted to the, to myself tomorrow, the E911 Road Naming Committee will review the proposed names for conflicts before Board- And after submitted to the, to myself tomorrow, the E-911 Road Naming Committee will review the proposed names for conflicts before board consideration on September 30th.
I know George had submitted a proposal into the chairman, asking that, that the Front Street be considered?
That's correct. I asked that we consider the word Front Street for there, and while we're having the discussion, I would ask that we consider reserving Main Street for us, for our new building that we're going to put in, so use that for the Main Street when we put our Newtown Hall in place. Just a comment here that I'm making and that's it.
Dan?
I think, I'll, I'll, I'll agree with the chief for the rest of.
Hold on, Tracy?
Do we have anything in town named Community?
Off the top, off the, excuse me, off the top of my head, I don't, I can't give you an answer for that, but that's really why I raised my hand. If you folks come up with other names tonight that you would like to have considered, I would ask that we forward them to the Road N-911 Committee to look up all of them collectively, so that in fairness, I don't know if Front Street would be a conflict of community, so we could come back with recommendations as to whether we see a conflict in any of them. That's really what was my point why I raised my hand.
I like the idea of Community Square.
I think speaking to Garth, it looks like, you know, I expressed my concern about calling that a square and continuing that road out to, in the future, out to wherever, 125 or Oak Hill Road or something. And that, somebody would have on the far end of that, it wouldn't be happening, call it a square. But it sounds like what they're looking at is that the road would, where it currently starts now, if the road were extended, and they would use something with the term square, and where it starts now, half the extent, there would be a new road. So I'm not sure if they're going to come forward with a square.
Community Bowl, I like that.
I'm not thinking any sides or favorism, but I think as a board we should all mine it, but that is that downtown. And so, and then there's certain individual businesses around there that kind of create it, and so, and it is a focal point, and so. So I, I like Main Street there, I like Central, and that's, and I like Christmas Lane. So maybe I just want to come up, I'm not going to make a list though, I think it's up to the other people, the property, and the people in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
So, so if I may, past boards have always, while, while the state law is very clear with board selectmen, have the ultimate authority to name any road in the community, private or public. Past boards, past history has been that they have allowed the developers to come up with names that they wanted, and as long as it wasn't a conflict with the 911 Committee, that we didn't see a conflict, then it's been, it's been approved by the board to allow them to use what they want. So obviously, this is a different board, and the pod you do will, and you're right to do what you want. But if, if you folks had names that you would like considered for that, over and above what Garth and Holy Rosary send forward tomorrow, I would ask that you give them to Connor, and we'll, as a group, we'll review them all together. Thank you.
My second.
And one note, if I may, the Newtown Hall will be, at this time, is anticipated to be a driveway off one of the newly constructed roads. The name of the constructed road, proposed to be constructed road that the Town Hall will have to be accessed off is named Signature Drive. That was an action, an action by the board at a previous meeting. So unless the town were to develop the driveway into a road in some way, it would just be a driveway access off Signature Drive, and not, it's not at this time proposed to be a road.
We voted to call it Signature?
Yes.
Or did the planning board do that?
No, 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 we didn't.
Still like Front Street, I don't care how you cut it. We have Community Bowl, both of that terms.
Are there any other comments from the board? Deputy Joy?
In answer to Tracy's question, phonetically the closest you have is Coachman, Coal Hoard, Colonial Commerce, Conway, and Cooper.
Thank you. That's great, too, submit your name. Anything else on? Holy Rosary, Christmas Dove. I said, is there anything else on this? New business. Clerk of the Works. Connor, I'll turn it over to you.
Glad to, so as previously discussed, the Town Hall Building Committee has recommended employing the services of a clerk of the works or an owner's representative for the Town Hall construction project. We worked to develop this draft request for proposals for a clerk of the work or owner's representative. The draft that you have here has it set to be advertised tomorrow, if approved, due by October 15th. It would be the goal and intention to have this individual or firm involved with the project from when the town enters a contract with the design, build, general contractor. The, in general terms, the proposal is written in a broad sense to allow an individual to apply, to allow a firm to offer their services with an hourly rate. It covers a scope of services which monitors the project from design through construction.
I just had some notes in, I had marked one up, just making sure we're in the places where we identify a firm or an individual, we're consistent with that throughout the October meeting. Just, it looks like it dropped off in a few spots. Other comments or feedback? Yes. Dan?
I know the individual is highly qualified, but he does a lot of work for the county, but he is booked down there, they know a lot of renovations and stuff. And I think we have future, other positions may be available, so.
Well, I think one of the things that we need to consider is the funding source for the clerk of the works. In my, my feeling on it was, and I shared this with Connor, was that this falls in line with part of the budget. We're, we're using a person to manage the budget, so it should be part of our 1.9 million dollar budget. And if you broke it out, I think we'd said that it was around 500 hours. How do we, it's a question that you're asking for. That there would be a fairly reasonable and manageable amount allocated for that. Something that is within.
Have you got any idea how long this is going to be advertised?
So it's, the proposal has an advertisement tomorrow through October 15th, so a little over three weeks. And Andy brings up a good point about funding source, and that would certainly be a decision that, that this board would have to make. I think at the building committee, when we discussed the proposal, we, it was important to wait and see what kind of a proposal we got back, which indicated what kind of an impact it would have from a cost standpoint, whether it was a lot of firms or if there were individuals. And certainly, in some communities, larger communities that have staff available, they'll assign a staff member to oversee a project. In some communities, the town administrator serves that role. And so it's not, it certainly isn't out of the realm of possibility that the, these services would be budgeted in the operating budget. But that would certainly be a political decision the select board would have to make. Being conscious of the 1.9 million dollars that the select, or that the town approved for the design and construction of this building. Keeping as many of those design and construction costs included in that budget will be important to maintain the sentiment of, of the community. But it's, it is common practice in, in larger communities to use staff members in this role, which would be, you know, a funding source outside of the project.
Dan?
And there's a lot of people in town that keep track of the two observations up and report. Could they report to the individual instead of reporting to me, or make a complaint to me, or ask me questions? So we're not, so they're not going to divert the process?
Are you referring to someone who has a complaint or discrepancy with the building process reporting to the clerk of the works?
Right, that's my idea, because there's a lot of people that did do an observation a while ago, and brought a couple of issues and stuff. Nothing major, other than the process and stuff.
Well, Malika wouldn't be relevant for this, but.
I know, I'm just saying.
Yes.
The certain individuals may comment.
That would be the person to, they would direct it to the clerk of the works.
Thank you.
We can make sure when we negotiate a scope of services, if the town pursues this option, we can make sure it's clear in the scope of services that there would be outreach and availability for the community for that reason.
George?
I, I missed, where, where are we going to advertise?
Yeah, that's a great question, so we anticipate this will be advertised on our website on the New Hampshire Municipal Association Classifieds. We've also had great success with advertising certainly construction-related activities on services like Bid Connect, aggregators of information that send blasts to area contractors and consultants to bid on projects. So we would make sure the information's available to them as well.
Thank you.
So I've been looking for an approval from the board of this draft.
As I say, so a motion to approve, as I said, I do have some notes here where it should make reference to individuals as well as firms. And then the only other note I had was under Section 4 where references qualifications. This is a list of three New Hampshire clients in the public sector, and I just had a question on that, is if we think we want to limit it to the public sector. I know we had a little discussion about that when we had our committee meeting, but I just wanted to know what the board's feedback was on that.
So my only piece of feedback is depending upon the building process they could choose, I think that will impact who, who even choose to review some of this. And so while we're not making the selection on building process before hiring this person, I would just ask that you be mindful of having a selection process. Which might lean towards municipal buildings as opposed to other qualifications.
The only piece that I see on that, they create some flexibility is typically municipal aspects tend to be a little more rigid, where if you have something that's not municipal, people tend to take a little more, sometimes more broadly as to how they can. I'll skin the bark off the tree.
I would like to make a motion to accept our request for proposal for clerk of the works with the notations noted by chairman and the vice chairman.
I would second that.
Now five.
Protocol five, I'm Joy.
Here I.
Here I. It is my recommendation that the board task the Town Hall Building Committee with reviewing the submissions for this request for proposal and presenting a recommendation to the board. Is that something the board's interested in, or would the board like to review and decide?
I think the building committee is a good place for that land. Great that I'm on the building committee, so is George, so I mean, it's, so I'm, I'm very comfortable with that, not my wheelhouse.
Great. So we'll have, I'll have the building committee review sometime after October 15th, and we'll have a recommendation to the board.
All right. Next on the list is the goodwill conservation easement amendment.
So this is part of an ongoing project which the select board has made multiple actions on, acquiring certain property. The Conservation Commission has worked with some use of Conservation Commission, or Conservation Fund money, but also a lot of grant money and other funding sources to expand the goodwill conservation area to include the Haley, Rubenstein, and Panish properties. And this Conservation Easement Amendment adjusts the original Conservation Easement deed for the Goodwill property. One of the notable changes which was provided ahead of time was that the town is being removed as, as an executory interest holder. And the answer provided was when the, the original Conservation Easement deed was entered into, the town, the sale, or the town's ownership of the Goodwill Conservation Area wasn't finalized. So it was important for the town to have that executory interest. And so now that the town is the owner of the Goodwill property and the new properties being added to this Conservation Area, yeah, it would be redundant to have the town as the older, as the owner also be listed as an executory interest holder.
This, this caught my attention pretty quickly as I was going through it, because if you look at the map that everyone has, it has the goodwill conservation easement, and it's got self-conservation lands defining it. And I went back through some of my old paperwork that I like to collect. And I have the state reports that list the town is the person responsible for that land, not Southeast Land Trust. Which includes the dam and everything that goes along with that. So I, I was really a little concerned when I read it, because I'm like, how did it suddenly, is this suddenly switching over to self? When everything we've done for the three-plus years that I've been on this board, it's been the town's responsibility? Doesn't make, it just doesn't add up. Would you like me to? I would if you wouldn't mind, I, as soon as Dan, go ahead, Dan.
I know the town lands meeting reviewed all of the property tax sales and other Conservation Easement. And there is a lot of confusion, but there's multiple people named on it. And it's kind of, you read back, it bounces back and forth, it's hard to figure out, I can't really, I think, I suggest you talk to the chairman of the Town Lands Meeting. For, and John too, because there's multiple people who hold these in our town.
Okay, I mean, the issue is that Southeast Land Trust holds the Conservation Easement. It has been town-owned property, well, the existing Goodwill property has been owned by the town since immediately after the easement was put in place. It was sort of part of the same transaction, but just the way it worked, first, first easement was put on with the previous owner, and then immediately thereafter, the town acquired title to the property. So the town has always been the owner of the property with Southeast Land Trust, that initially was part of Rury's Conservancy, but now that's part of Southeast Land Trust, holds a Conservation Easement, and that is the extent of their responsibility. Is there a confusion about what it means to hold a Conservation Easement?
Is that? I guess so, because it just doesn't align with everything that kind of we've been doing at other properties, is the way.
So, can you give me an example of a possibility?
So if I, if I think about the Stone House Forest.
That is owned by Southeast Land Trust.
Okay. So they own all the land up there, and then also the, trying to think of the bigger parcel there behind it.
Stone House Pond?
Stone House Pond.
Yeah, they own that as well, so they are, they are fee owners of those properties.
Okay.
Town owns Goodwill, the town owns the Caleb, the town owns Satwasser. So that's, we're responsible for what happens there, but there are in all cases third parties that enforce the Conservation Easement and make sure that the town doesn't pour on a butter, doesn't mess up the terms of the Conservation Easement. Just as the town holds Conservation Easement. Just as the town holds conservation easements on many properties throughout, it is our responsibility to make sure that the private landowner doesn't violate the terms of the conservation easement.
Dan?
What about Chestnut Forest? Are we the sole?
I believe, the town owns that one.
We're the sole, we're the sole person on that though, right?
I, I believe so.
What Select Forest and Air is referring to is certain conservation subdivisions commit land to conservation, and it's, there's different ways to approach that conservation, that conserve land. In some instances, the town has owned the actual land, in other cases, the land has been owned by the association, and the town holds a conservation easement. So there, my understanding from the Conservation Commission is, at some point, they will develop a recommendation for how the town approaches that conserved land, whether the town owns it or just holds a conservation easement. But there's multiple ways to accomplish the land being in conservation, but also being appropriately monitored.
Yeah, that's fair enough. I mean, we, in terms of privately owned property on which the town holds a conservation easement, we only have control over that land inasmuch as if the private landowner decides to do something that is incompatible with the terms of the conservation easement, we can say, no, no, you may not do that. We cannot go in there and do anything ourselves, but we can restrict what they can do, what a private landowner can do. And the same way, if we, you know, on the goodwill property, if something, we decided we wanted to build an apartment building out there or something, SALT could come in and say, no, no, you may not do that. That is not an approved use of that land, according to the conservation easement.
I just, I don't quite understand what the document is supposed to be doing.
Well, if I may explain that, it is, you know, requiring these new lands. By the way, just one slight, let me just correct one thing you said up front. The Panish property is part of the overall project, but it is not actually part of the goodwill amendment. It's slightly separate. It's something the town, it's, it'll still be owned by Paul Panish, the town will hold a conservation easement on that. The rest of the lands involved are part of the goodwill amendment, just want to make that clear. Anyway, I'm sorry, what was your question?
So I'm trying to understand, what, what power are we transferring to SALT with the conservation easement?
We are expanding, I mean, they hold the conservation easement on the existing property we have acquired or will acquire the Haley property, we've acquired the Rubenstein and will acquire the Haley properties as conservation land, and to ensure that they are conserved, there has to be some formal way in which that happens, and the best way is a conservation easement. And it was determined that the cheapest and easiest way to do it was to amend the existing goodwill conservation easement. One could make an entirely separate conservation easement, but just for the, for the new properties, but it is easier to amend the existing one. And there are complications to it, but that's, turns out to be the easier way.
Dan?
I was unable to make it sadly, but the Town Land Committee met with the forester, and they were planning on logging that property. So can we log that property?
Yes, as long as it's consistent with the terms of the conservation easement, and that, that conservation easement does allow for forestry activities.
Right. Is it the town or Southeast Land Trust?
The town, the property must be under a forest management plan that is dictated by the conservation easement, and that conservation, and that forest management plan must, you know, respect the, the conservation values of the property. You know, more wild clear cuts unless it's for obvious ecological reasons and things like that. So the Southeast Land Trust would review the forest management plan that the town puts forward, and if it's okay by them, go ahead and get the chainsaws out there.
George?
So the town is giving up a lot of its responsibilities, is maintaining the property, turning everything over to SALT, and what I read in here.
No, no, it's such a town.
Can I finish, please?
Okay.
You're gonna make a mistake.
But when you read in here, it states in here on several pages that it can't be done without SALT's permission to do it, and some of the permission that we have on some of the other pieces are being given up. Is that right or wrong?
The Southeast Land Trust does not manage the land. They will not manage the land. The town will manage the land, but the Southeast Land Trust, if we try to manage the land in a way that is inconsistent with the conservation easement, can say, no, you may not do this. If we do it anyway, they can take us to court.
So let me ask you this, man, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
What is the advantage for the town of Barrington to turn around and turn this property over with this easement change?
All the grant money that was acquired in order to acquire these properties requires that they be permanently conserved. And one way in which they are permanently conserved is by placing a conservation easement on them. And that was the way that the grants were written, and so on and so forth.
So, but when the town has the property, and then the town turns around and puts a conservation easement, why isn't the same thing? Why isn't the town there to protect the property also? Why do we have, I'm trying to find a roadway as to why we should give all of this to SALT to do it. Why can't the town have it? We've already got the properties, we've already been paid, so, but when the money was granted to us, did it say we had to give it to SALT, or could the town turn around and carry the easements?
One does not hold an easement on property that one owns. That would be very much the fox guarding the hen house. That would be, you know, me making sure nothing bad happens to the land, while I own the land and save the game if I do something tricky on it. So although I understand it's not actually illegal, it is very bad policy to hold the conservation easement on land that you own. There has to be a third party, and I'm sure the granting agencies would never allow that. I have no doubt whatsoever that DES, which is the main source of the money for this, but there are others as well, must be permanently conserved by something recognized, which can be ownership by a conservation organization such as SALT, or it can be owned by a private or public entity, as long as there is a third party holding a conservation easement.
Dan?
Right, there's multiple agencies that have all these deeds and stuff, and then you should meet with the chairman of the Town Land Committee, he can show you all the different names. It's not the Southeast Land Trust?
Well, I understand, I'm just asking, what we're giving up as a town? Because I've read some of this through, and I don't understand it at all, but I think, I think that the chair should consider maybe having our attorney review this, or has the attorney already reviewed this?
So it was developed by an attorney, not the town's attorney, and in email correspondence with the board, I let you know that at your request, I would, I would dispatch the town's attorney services to review it. But if, being an amendment of the existing agreement and being developed by an attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, the attorney that worked on this was not directly affiliated with SALT, or is that wrong?
Um, I know he does a lot of work for SALT. He certainly is not an employee of theirs. Tom Maslow is a, one of probably the top conservation attorney, land attorney in the state.
So I have not submitted for legal counsel. I wouldn't do that without the board's direction.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I'd ask that you would consider that. It's not, you know, not just, just a question maybe, but there's more on this here. Thank you.
I, I agree completely that the town's attorney should review the, review the deed. If there's any question about that.
I would, I would stand in support of that as well, Select Forest and Bailey. I think for me, the very first thing that I looked up was executory interest, and understood that it meant future interests on the property, and that not only is this deeding the conservation through SALT, but then also applying new executory interests to Stratford County Conservation District. And I don't know how that.
Is the district on it?
Yeah, it's something.
Yeah, that's right.
So I think for me to understand how that could impact the town in any decision-making with the conserved land, it's completely out of my wheelhouse. So I would ask that we bring it to counsel.
I would also agree with that.
Yeah, I will mention that DES, the Department of Environmental Services, will also have to be written into the new deed, because they are providing so much, much of the funding for the whole project through the drinking water, and so they insist on having a little say in anything that goes on.
So that would be, so DES and Stratford County Conservation District would all be given future interest in the property?
Oh, interest in terms of, of ensuring that the conservation values of the property as, as described in the conservation easement deed are being followed, are being met up.
Mr. Chairman, would you like a motion, or?
Yep.
I'd like to make a motion that we follow this to our attorney for advice and consultation on this.
And I would second that.
Thank you very much.
Protocol, bye. And Charlie?
Bailey, aye.
Aye, aye.
May I just ask, assuming the town attorney doesn't have any issues with it, is it safe assumption that you guys will go ahead and approve it? And we can, I mean, already, surveyor's already out there doing the work, it's all been so far, fun of it, because time is getting a little tight.
So the board meets again on September 30th, which was the recommended due date for finalization. The board would have two options. One, you could make a vote to incorporate any minor recommendations from the attorney and approve it if she's comfortable, or you could wait for the attorney's feedback and make a final decision on September 30th.
Waiting for final feedback from the attorney.
So to, to answer Mr. Wallace's question, if the attorney responds with no concerns from the changes made to the conservation easement deed, what would the board's action be?
I, I wouldn't want to say right now. I'd want to see the attorney say before I make a decision.
I'm just saying, if the attorney says, no problem, it's fine the way it is, will you guys all be okay with it?
We'll make that determination when the attorney comes back with the.
I'll share. I will have it on the agenda for September 30th.
I'm not sure I can miss another Monday. There's another thing I've given up that I have missed some weeks in a row, but I feel this.
Is there anyone else you're on that could fill in for you?
Well, Dwayne Hyde from SALT could probably come in, although, you know, he's working hard on this, and I'm good. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Oh, thank you. I'll have this for my dessert. All right. The staff report, it's Administrator McCogburn.
Great. So I'll, just a couple of pieces of general information I'd like to provide to the board and the community. First item is the compensation study. The town entered a contract with Municipal Resources Incorporated on September 17th to perform the compensation study services. Staff orientation will be scheduled for early October, and as I indicated earlier, the process is expected to be completed by the end of December. That will include at least one, but maybe multiple presentations and discussions with the select board, and the compensation study task force will remain close to the project. Questions about the compensation study? Next item is the Town Hall request for qualifications. The due date was September 19th. I wanted to let the board know, and certainly the community know, that we received ten, or four responses, not sure where ten came from, four responses to that request for qualifications. The one from Witcher, one from Bruin, one from Carino, and one from North Branch Construction. And so those, all four of those submissions are available on the town's website. The Town Hall Building Committee has copies of them. There's also copies of those submissions available for each board member if they're interested. Interviews are scheduled for September 30th with all four firms that submitted a response to our request, and the Town Hall Building Committee will have a recommendation to the board for October 7th.
If anyone would like to see the four, I have them here with me, the other six you'll have to get from Colin.
And like I said, I do have copies at the Town Hall for, for board members, reserved specifically.
Building committee is going to be going on notice tomorrow?
Building committee will be meeting tomorrow morning to develop questions for the interview process and a rating system in advance of the interviews on the 30th.
Great. And squirrel.
7:30 tomorrow morning. If there are no more questions on the Town Hall request for, request for qualifications, move on to the road safety audit. So the police department worked with the New Hampshire Department of Transportation for a professional road safety audit at the intersection of Route 125 and Beauty Hill Road. Select board members, I'm sure there have been residents that have approached you with concern of that intersection. This is a great step forward for the town pursuing those concerns that we've heard. Certainly a basis for the decision for the road safety audit was the number of accidents at that intersection. So each year, the Department of Transportation is awarded $10 million from the federal government as separate from their road improvements, to make safety improvements at roads and intersections. And so they spend, through this safety audit process, they spend, sometimes within the same year, they spend that money to make improvements. So the group was out last week, or two weeks ago, studying and discussing the intersection. A final report will be put together with recommendations for the state and possibly for the town. I will say that one of the options discussed, which was, seemed most realistic, was adjusting the right turn lane on the southbound portion of Route 125 in order to offset and not obstruct the view of folks trying to turn left out of Beauty Hill onto 125. So that would be an adjustment to the state highway there that, that may be considered. And so the, the town didn't pay for the road safety audit. If there's recommendations on the town side, maybe some additional pavement markings at that intersection on the town road or other things, that would be at the town's expense. But I did want to let the board and community know that that's happening, and again, in a large part due to the response from the community members that they had a concern there. So we do follow up on these items.
You said they're coming to adjust the right turn lane on 125.
Correct.
They should look at the right turn lane coming off Beauty Hill, because as a person that drives it multiple times a day, people come up and then they pull up past you, and if you're taking a left-hand turn out of Beauty Hill onto 9, going northbound, you can't see what's coming from the people that are heading southbound.
That's great feedback. That was discussed, it will be part of the report. One of the, one of the proposed solutions would be to narrow the access of 125 on, from Beauty Hill, to only allow one car. Now certainly that would, the folks turning right, that would, you know, jam them up quite a bit. But that was a discussion of the group, and will be part of the professional report that's prepared.
I personally feel that when it comes up with even that road, Beauty Road, we invest some money and fix it right, with the mechanics there ends up in, up to standards. There's no real standards on that road, and there's no ditch lanes, no shape of that road, and it's going to cost some money. We've got some rough estimates from engineers I don't agree with, but I think the road aid can work something out, and it'll put out the bed. Thank you.
We'll keep that in mind.
When can we anticipate that report?
December, is what I hear from the fire chief.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Carry on.
The only last thing I wanted to make the board and community aware of is we have job opportunities at the transfer station. We have two employees that are working on ending their employment with the town for various reasons, creating vacancies that we will need to fill. Currently, there's one regular part-time position and one more part-time position with fill-in options available at the transfer station. The advertisement is on the town's website and newspaper this weekend, on Facebook and other advertising areas. So any interested community members should apply with it. And I'll turn it over to the Municipal Office Administrator for what you have to sign.
For signature tonight, we have payroll manifest for check date 9/19/2019, an AP manifest 2019-76 dated 9/18/2019, a RAP permit for the prints of Bear Newton Library set to expire on 12/6/2019, two deeds with no covenants, one for parcel 017-0029-000R located at 132 Roberts Road, the second for parcel 123-001 located at 577 Daniel Shore Road.
And just for the board and community's knowledge, the two deeds that the board has to sign are property owners, that the town deeded their property properly on the 29, and they've come back in. As you know, property owners have certain property rights after. As you know, property owners have certain property rights after it's been deeded, so they've paid all of the back taxes and all of the necessary fees to buy those properties back. Two, two properties that the town deeded for you tonight, and we have other prior property owners that are in the process of doing the same thing. So, it's a, a great way for the town to collect the past due taxes and fees and prevent the town from going through eviction proceedings on the newly acquired property.
Did you want to mention work anniversaries?
I did at the last meeting. Yep, for September, they haven't changed. I'll have new work anniversaries for the October meeting.
Sorry, I forgot to bring this site here and leave it down. All right. Select or Select Person's reports.
I missed the Thursday night appointment for conservation. I missed the Town Land Committee Monday, Saturday morning, too. I have work obligations, I gotta make hay when sunshine.
George?
The meeting at the library was scheduled for last week is now going to be scheduled for this coming Tuesday, for tomorrow.
You didn't take it in the islands?
No, they, they rescheduled. I guess they just wanted to give me the opportunity so I could show myself there.
Come on.
We had no idea.
You approved one and you continued another.
Yeah, but I did, I think I said that last...
You did the last one.
The Zarden Board of Adjustment net approved one request and continued another.
I attended the most recent REC Commission meeting on October 19th. The REC Department will hold the town's trick or trunk, trunk or tree?
Truck or tree.
Thank you. You, if you'd like to participate, they have a form that needs to be turned in by October 17th to register both your vehicle and the people that will be on the property handing out candy. They suggest you have available 200 pieces of candy for the children that will be attending. The REC Commission also approved the 70-plus-page study of their future strategic goals, and are making a few requests of the company that did the study, as far as providing them with additional working information. And I think that was, I think that was about proportion of the meeting that I had to report on. Thank you.
All right, the Planning Board reviewed La Hahn Small Road, which we all approved tonight. And there's, I believe, I forget who it is, I just look, I think there's three cases before the Board for October 1st, and there will be a follow-up discussion around the wildlife encounters site, if I can collect that all of that. That's everything for the Planning Board. George?
Mr. Chairman, I have one other request that I should have requested during the budget piece, but next week we're going to discuss the recreation. I wonder if we could have a report on revolving fund, also discuss, do you think that's something we could have, sir?
Yeah, that's a great question. That was actually a topic of discussion at our Advisory Budget Committee meeting, and so, one of the additional pieces of information I provided to you tonight was a report of the history and usage of that recreation revolving fund. So, that was filed in Section 12 of your binder. The additional information, which I've requested and hope to have available by tomorrow or Wednesday, is a report of the revenue and expenditure for all revolving fund accounts, which will paint a clearer picture of the, how the revolving fund is used to fund the programs and that aspect of the Recreation Department. So, that information, my intention is to have all of the listed information available by Wednesday for the Recreation presentation on September 30th.
Thank you very much.
Last thing, is there's a concert, or the, yeah, conservation, a Technology Committee meeting tomorrow evening, and a Building Committee meeting tomorrow morning.
I do know that there is also on October the 8th, a presentation provided by a nonpartisan, nonprofit group that talks about New Hampshire and how schools are funded throughout the state now, and how they were funded throughout the state prior to the current RSAs for funding. And Matt Towne had approached a series of people and asked if we were interested in reading through the material and digesting some of it. So, that's taking place here in this building on October 8th, and I think it's been pushed out on Facebook as a possible advertisement.
In the time? Please?
Six thirty, okay.
Six thirty?
Yes.
And for the Board's information, I do plan to attend as an audience member, and I would be glad to report back any information I hear to the Board at the next meeting.
I will also be attending.
I won't be in attendance.
Any, anything else that anyone would like to address? We have a non-public...
Yes.
So, non-public or personal reputation?
Personal reputation sufficient. And you should have a last public comment.
Final public comment?
Thank you.
And thank your wife for the smack.
I make a motion?
Second.
Article five.
Bailey, aye. Article five.